To say that this is a working meeting between the Board of Selectmen and the Warren and West Warren libraries. There's not going to be any public input accepted except from those two agencies. And we will start now. I know we had requested, we had requested a three-minute synopsis or something. We will, we will do that. So I will allow the Warren Library to go first and give us your three minutes and Ms. Goode Ash will be timing.
Thanks. John Perneir of Warren Public Library. And bear with me, a new guy on the job. Looking at the positive side of the present library situation. The Warren Public Library has been very grateful to see an upsurge of volunteers, new members, and donations. Add to this the many enthusiastic supporters of the West Warren Library. They have a lot of support for libraries in this town. But because of our recent history, we're working against each other. The root cause of this is the 50-50 split in funding, which effectively moved a third of the Warren Public Library's budget to West Warren. This came a time when the Warren Public Library was, because of town financial constraints, already operating on a very low budget. We've tried to return to the historic funding split as was recommended in 2014 by the Warren Town Finance Committee. But this didn't pass at the annual town meeting. The 50-50 split has left the cash reserves of the Warren Public Library depleted. We've had to cut Saturday services to keep them operating in the right. If our funding isn't restored, a library that served this town since the 1890s could lose certification affecting both libraries. This would be a terrible outcome for everyone. The Warren Public Library was a vision of hundreds of town residents donating time, money, and energy to leave a legacy for future generations. The structure was built to last hundreds of years. It's an architectural gem listed on the National Register of Historic Places. The collection of books and other materials is strong. And we have an irreplaceable collection of artifacts that document the history of the town. These things belong to the whole community. The people of Warren own this library and we can all sustain it through another 125 years. Which brings us back to our problems. Stole merger talks and confrontational town meetings are jeopardizing the future of both Warren libraries. Our trust is being eroded by inaccurate statements at town meetings. For example, when we requested a separate raise in our funding, it was said that this would disqualify the libraries for state funding. According to the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners, this is not the case. Despite this, we're still willing to try to overcome these problems and we'd like to work with West Warren to find a solution.
Thank you. Do you have a copy of that?
Yes.
Can I please get a photo rental? Under the new state laws, we have to attach actual copy of meetings. So just letting you know why we're asking for it. Okay, does West Warren have a statement or anything?
Well, I didn't really put anything together. I can make a verbal statement.
You can make a verbal statement?
Do you need me to make a verbal statement then document it?
If you could document it for us, we have to include it. I'll give you three minutes. Go ahead.
Okay. As you're aware, we've had some difficulties over the last few years in trying to facilitate some sort of merger. Obviously, we haven't been successful in that. The thing that is constantly coming to play here is budget. We've been established that we were going to be 50-50 and we were heading in the right direction. However, unbeknownst to us, there was another agenda on the table. And that kind of took things in a different direction. So there hasn't been a whole lot of complete disclosure of exactly what our true intentions are. West Warren Library has pretty much been about services. We're not really held together about a building. And that has been the constant, I think, argument is the building, but not the services. And that's what's really important for our community. I mean, as we know, we have, what is it, 5,135 people here. Out of that 5,135, 9.6 percent of them are unemployed. That's a huge unemployment rate. So with that being said, you know, you have a lot of people out of work that can really utilize your library services. So our arguments have never been about services. They've all been about building and location. And we have to get past that. And it's been pretty much about individual thoughts and individual ideas instead of it being a collaborative idea of a whole entire community to come together and work together. So in order for anything to be successful, we have to all be on the same page that this is not personal. It's not individual. It's about all of us working together as a community. John said?
Okay, thank you. Now, we're the board's fans on this. We've said this before, I think. The board is not going to choose from one library to the other. That's not going to happen. Okay? We're not going to favor one library over the other. The board's only reason for being here basically is, is we want one library, is what it comes down to. And correct me if I'm wrong at any point in time, okay? We want one library. We are not going to pick a building, okay? We understand that the Warren Library building is historical. We understand that we want to keep it. We want to keep it in good shape. But we are not going to, we are not going to pick that building for the library. If we do that, then we're taken aside. So it's not going to happen. We're not going to put any money into the Warren Library building. It does not own by the town. The only way we can help, I think, and again, I think the only way we can help at this time for the libraries is we want to see them combined and we want to see, come up with maybe a new place to put a library, maybe a new building. Realizing the whole time that we still want to keep the Warren Library building in good shape. What it could be is up for debate. But the reason for being here tonight, we have a lot, we have very high tax rate right now. Not going to go down by any way, shape, or form. It's going to go up again for the next three years. We have a probably gigantic problem this year with the Quaybog Regional School budget. There was a roughly $200,000 cut in regional school transportation for this year, which we know is going to hit. Last year, we were $225,000 above minimum. We were informed the other day that it would be about three times that amount in order to maintain services. We were told it was approximately 700 and something thousand if we wanted to maintain services that's there this year. Now, that's just a background, okay? That's not to say we're going to give them that. It's strictly to say, that's what we were told at this stage. What we'd like to do tonight is kind of ask questions to both sides or both libraries. Basically be, what are the issues? What's the issues for West Warren Library and what's the issues for Warren Library? What can we do to fix those issues from West Warren and what can we do to fix them from Warren? I think that's what we have to look at. To be perfectly honest with you, and if we can't fix something somewhere along the line and we have to keep paying what we're paying for libraries now, the odds are you're going to, both the libraries are going to be in more trouble than they are now. Because there's nothing to say we're going to be able to extend more benefits to either one. The best thing that could happen if we can combine and try to save a little bit of money and do something, even if we had to get a new building at some point in time, we just know we have to do something to put it into one central place. Now, the other thing would be, we probably would like it to be a town library, okay? We have nothing against either library, in the least. But we really need a town library. We can pay the people according to the remuneration schedule for what we have or that we can make up. We feel that in the long run, maybe not right away, but in the long run, we can save some money and stop duplication of efforts. That's where we stand. Yeah? So what we're basically trying to do tonight, and I'll start with either library, if anybody wants to start. What's the major problems right now? I heard, I heard what you said. What are the issues in, let's call it West Warren. What's the issues in West Warren?
Well, there's a multiple issues.
Okay.
I think it's not disclosing exactly what the true intentions are. We at one point had a really good open line of communications. We were meeting. We were on the same page. And then all of a sudden, within the meetings, there was, no one could come up with a, with a solution. But not necessarily a solution, but we couldn't even voice, you know, ideas. So it was like, no, this is the way it's going to be and we're not listening to you. So it was kind of very difficult, even to the point where we had discussed the museum. I mean, it's just little tidbit things. It's nothing that was like, we couldn't repair. But it just continued to snowball and go on and on and on. For instance, when we had hired a new director, that was working out great. And when we had concerns, we felt it was in our best interest to contact their board, which we did on every step of the way. And we didn't have any sort of support there. So when we were having issues, there was no, you know, we understand, but we're a separate board. We can't help you. So it immediately took us from actually working together to actually separating us again. And then came the whole, well, we decided we need more money and that sort of thing. So it just kind of continually snowballed. But we were at one point on target and we were in a good direction. And things could have actually proceeded along. But then all of a sudden, we started snowballing and there was a lot of miscommunication and a lot of, not full disclosure of exactly what our intentions are. And I think it became really personal.
Okay, thank you. Now Warren, issues?
Well, I think the trust issues really began at the meeting when the no prior information to us, West Warren put up the vote to take the third of our funding. So right there, I mean, it all started on a really bad note. We've been trying to get our funding back. Who wouldn't? I mean, we're operating, we're operating in deficit. It's a little better now because we closed some days and, you know, heating oil wasn't as expensive this year. But what's happening is that with our funding cut like this, the inevitable end conclusion is the loss of a library for this town. You know, a really, to my mind, a terrible idea. And so I agree, we, we need to build trust between the two libraries. But I don't feel like, you know, I don't want to be pointing fingers, but I don't think that it's all about Warren not being trustworthy. The Warren Public Library.
So there was never at any time that we didn't make our thoughts known. We had full disclosure during everything. Communication started to break down when the West Warren board walked out of meetings. That was a big, a big reason that communication broke down. We had agreed, and that was part of West Warren, asking us that not to pursue, to retain our historical split while we were in the merger agreements. And we agreed that we did not during that time while we were merging, we would agree to accept the 50-50 split. There were other demands made by West Warren. One in particular was that they wanted to form a new library and they wanted to rename the library. And they told us that if the name Warren was anywhere in the library, they were out of the merger agreement. There was a lot of things that brought down the talking between the two boards.
Let me ask this question. On the democratic level, how, if you, Warren and West Warren Library got together, okay? How many, how was it decided if you took a vote on something, okay? If you took a vote on something? Was it a 50-50 vote? I mean, each of you have the same power of the vote. In other words, if Warren didn't have more people to vote than West Warren did, it was strictly 50-50 on votes?
It wasn't really like that. It was more just us talking out the issues that were on the table.
Mm-hmm.
We didn't, I don't recall us doing any voting personally.
I'm just using vote as a, as a way to go about it. I guess the question would be, if there was an issue that was discussed and West Warren wanted one thing and Warren wanted another thing, okay? How was it decided? How was that issue decided?
I think it was a consensus thing, basically.
Actually, we had decided that this wasn't the time to make those decisions. We had felt that the merged libraries formed the new board and that board would make these important decisions at a future date. Our main concern was just trying to get the two libraries together, to get our assets together, to get an agreement on the table.
Now, I'll be with you in a second. What, it sounds like one of the major spectrum points was that the Warren Library wanted to maintain that building. If you got together, Warren Library wanted to have that building.
That's probably true. We said that right from the beginning. That was, that was what we wanted. We said that we wanted more than anything to maintain that historic building. We had done a building plan in the early 2000s. We still have it. A plan for expanding, including purchasing land behind the library. We had spoken to the owner that bought the fountain house and about that. And yeah, we really want to maintain that. That library is, you know, the town hall is the heart of the town. The library is right there.
Let me ask this. If indeed that, if a plan was done up, okay, for a town library and that town library didn't use West Warren building, didn't use Warren building, but you had a building somewhere in between maybe, I'm just throwing it out there. And the current library in Warren could be used as a historical museum or something like that. Because this is going to be, it just seems to me, I want some other input. It just seems to me that if, if the only library we're going to have is going to be in that building in Warren, we're not going to settle it. It's just my opinion, you know?
Well, one of the other things.
Go ahead, Jean.
Question. First of all, I'm very new on this, so a lot of this is history and I don't necessarily have an opinion on that. But as a resident and, you know, a lawyer involved with the library and the town, it seems to make sense that a building, you know, I know how much trouble this town has had finding places for anything. We've been trying to get a police station for years. There's a building. If it were a museum, it would still take funds to maintain it, first of all. Location for another building, where? Libraries should be in the center, whether we're doing the center of Warren or the center of West Warren. And it just, I think, people need to get past their Warren or West Warren issues and say, if there's a building, a public building, wouldn't it make sense to at least explore that first before trying to throw it out and go to something else? It just, it won't work. But to take it off the table because of Warren and West Warren, hey, the best building we have in this community is our school. That's in West Warren. I live in Warren. We don't complain. You know, we've got to get beyond this two-town thing and look at what's practical. And that's just an outside observation without having been involved in any of this discussion.
Okay, go ahead.
So this is not about a two-town issue. Has nothing to do with that. Initially, the West Warren Library, its historical roots started as a community reading room and has since developed into a library. And we do equal services and we provide equal everything without the building. Equally, we're the same. And so therefore, the finances should be split evenly, which is what we strive for, which has occurred. It has occurred. No personal agendas, but this, we are on an even playing field now so we can mutually come to terms upon what is appropriate and necessary for this community. The grant study that was done on the building is over 15 years old. It's no longer viable. We need to be all redone. Any grant information that you look at for establishing and maintaining and retrofitting a new building out of an old building, everything that the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners has advertised, even on their webpage, about, is that that's not the way to go. That they encourage libraries and communities to go another avenue because it's impractical and it's a financial debt. There's always hidden costs, hidden problems, and the grants aren't there anymore like they used to be. And that is true. A library is not a building. It's not made up of stone or brick. It's a community. It's a community center. Where both communities, Warren, West Warren, Warren, Quaybog community, can come, check out things, use computers, gather information, seek for jobs, have community reading rooms. That's what a library is. And it's not about us versus them and it shouldn't be. It should be about what's best for this community and we need to look beyond a building. That is the most beautiful building. I was the assistant director there for a number of years. I love that building. However, as a librarian, it's impractical. It is absolutely impractical. That basement cannot be fixed. It's so it's unusable space. I myself have hauled more musty books out of that basement that we had to toss after being down there for a week or two. Paint peeling and lack of space and inaccessibility. It's just not practical. So with that aside, I would like to see this community work together as a community to come up with a goal that's going to best suit everybody. And it's not about what I want or what they want. It's about what's best for everybody.
Okay, thank you. One second. Anything to say, Gary O?
No, go ahead.
Excuse me, was this just board members that you said were going to be speaking?
We said board members. We kind of opened it up to everybody right now, just for now. Bear with us for a little while, okay? Yes?
I just want to clarify something about the building. There was a mold problem in the basement that there were inadequate dehumidifiers. We have rectified that. We have taken stuff out of there. There was one pipe that had asbestos on it. That has been remediated. The, you know, I hate to keep hearing this again and again, and having worked in that building, there's nothing wrong with the basement. When we had all the snow this winter, we had no problem with the roof. That building was built in the manner that they built buildings in the 1890s, which is granite, brick, oak. It's an incredible building. If it's left empty, which is the only result I can see of taking the library out of there, since there is no funding for a museum, it is going to be an empty building on Main Street, another, you know, problem for this town. And it's going to deteriorate. It's just what happens to buildings. If, you know, nobody lives in them, they deteriorate. The other thing, just quickly, if we were to get a new library that had the capacity of that library in West Warren, we are talking millions and millions of dollars. I believe more than, you know, making that library handicapped accessible. I would like to see, myself, and this is just me, I'd like to see that library stay there and West Warren have a branch library that is made less expensive by having maybe one library in between the two libraries. You know, some sort of sharing of materials, you know? I think there's a way you can get the expense down without, I think a big sticking point is that West Warren wants their library and I can totally understand that. We want our library and I, although they're both, all of our libraries, but the, you know, if there's a way to allow both parties to survive, I think that's the way to go. And I think it can be done in a way that we can keep the expenses down.
Any comment?
The only comment I have regarding what you just made is that sharing. It's a great word, but how are you going to get together to make it happen? That hasn't happened.
We did have a librarian between the two.
Right, I know.
I think we hired the wrong person, really. It's what it came down to.
It's not here, but I'm saying now and we're moving, it's, how do we get there? I mean, it's almost like, I hate to use this analogy. It's like my kids. I have one here and one there and you're driving me nuts. It's like, come on, guys, get together and get this, you know, happen. And I put them in the same room. We're trying. The board is trying. I just don't know. It seems there's just such a division here. I would like to ask the question of both libraries and one person can answer. What, and I'll have West Warren go first. What do you think is in the best interest of the town moving forward regarding a library for the community? What would you like to say?
Honestly, I think that it should be town-owned and town-run.
Okay.
And it should probably be a new facility. I mean, ideally, it would be awesome if you could create that particular building and retrofit it and do all that. That would be great. That has never been our problem. Basically, it's, you know, we all have different ideas and different visions. And personally, we all have different ideas and visions, but it's really not about my personal belief. It's kind of what's necessary and what's needed. And we need pretty much more space, more computers, meeting rooms, programs, that sort of thing. And we can't even agree on those particular things. So it's...
Let me ask this question. I'm going to go back to Gary in one second. I'm going to ask this to both libraries. Would it be acceptable, would it be acceptable if we went down, if we went down and looked at what the space would be needed at a library, since what you just said, at the Warren Library? And see what would have to be done to expand it so that it could be, it could be acceptable to both sides? And would it be acceptable to both, if I got to that point, would it be acceptable if the town took over the libraries and made it a town library and town employees? In addition, if we were to do a Board of Library Trustees under the town and we had three members from West Warren and three members from Warren, would that be acceptable?
Yes.
But before you answer, are you referring to using the West Warren facility and maybe trying to utilize the space that's next door to it also? And enlarging it?
I'm talking about enlarging, at this stage, if there's, nobody's got, really got a problem with the building in Warren. With the building itself in Warren, okay? If nobody's got a problem with the building in Warren. If we were to, if it was to become town-owned and a town library and the town looked at to see what it would cost to expand, okay, and make it accessible as much as possible and we get into forming a Board of Trustees with three from the current West Warren Library and three from the current Warren Library, okay? And with town employees at that point and town library, would that be acceptable?
Keep in mind, handicap accessibility is first and foremost.
I understand. That would have to be part of it.
Yes. It absolutely has to be.
I have some questions, not to answer your question, but I have some questions. You started out tonight by talking about the problems of finances in this town.
Mm-hmm.
With the school, with the transportation. We don't know what our budget is going to be yet this year, although I think the governor's budget says it's, towns are, cities and towns are getting 3.6% additional funds, but that's yet to be seen. But anyway, and we also know that this is not a wealthy community. The tax base is high, all those kinds of things that you pointed out. So the possibility of finding a single place and purchasing a single place, which would be very, very expensive, I just, it seems as if the selectmen are saying two different things because that was your first thought that you wanted.
I'm not saying two different things. If you had a building and if you built it, had to build the building. I'm just saying if you want, if it was a new building, the way you're going, you can bond over 20 or 30 years and the actual cost could be handled.
Plus, there's a lot more grants available.
They're built.
New constructions.
The new construction.
Than it is for renovation.
There's not very much for...
Okay, so that's, okay, so that's part of the way you're thinking. So then, the other part about converting a private, the owned, library to a town library, there must be a significant process that we would need to go through in order for that to occur.
I'm sure there's legal process.
So I think it's legal and, and other, and I don't know what those are. I mean, I'm also a new board member, but have you, as selectmen, investigated that at all?
We haven't looked at it yet, but we wanted to call people here tonight first to see which way we're, which way was the best way to go. We don't know the answer to this, that's the reason we called you in. We wanted to hear what the, what the basic problem was and maybe a way of fixing them, okay? But whatever it's going to be, it's going to have to be 50/50, whatever that might be. The, the Board of Trustees, if we were to go that way, and a combined library is going to have to be three and three, three from Warren, three from West Warren. It's not going to be four from Warren and two from West Warren, or four from West Warren and two from Warren. It's going to have to be a joint decision made, okay, in behalf of the whole town. There's only one town. A joint decision made in behalf of the whole town as far as who's going to be the librarian, who's going to do, in charge of what. You get that board and it's three and three, they make a decision, the decision stands. It, it can't be that one, one library has a head over the other one. It has to be, if we combine, has to be absolutely 50/50.
I, as taxpayer, I still feel that to build a new building is going to be a hit. Even if you do it over many years, it's, it's still a hit over many years.
Well, I think it's a hit no matter what, but I also think it's going to be a, we're going through it now with town hall.
Okay, we have to have a library. I don't want to see the libraries go away. I want to see a library, and it's an investment in the town for the students, for the seniors, for everybody who's going to, you know, utilize the services. So do we want to move forward and sometimes spend a little, it'll pay off down the road? Or do we want to continue on this road for years to come? Maybe somebody gets forced to close, somebody stays open?
But as we know, this town has a history of not being responsive to new demands. I mean, how many years did it take to get the elementary school funded? Many, many town meetings and many annual meetings. We need a police station. I mean, there are, you know, so we would, we, these group of 20 or so of us in this room tonight, wouldn't be making that, you know, decision. It would be the townspeople that would be voting for a new edifice and to make that happen.
You have to remember one thing. Right now, in this day and age, okay, there's no doubt that if, if the Warren Library wants to get bigger, the money is going to have to come from the town to do it, or a grant, or anything else. It's going to be hard to get a grant to, to, yeah. As you can, we went through this when we're looking at fixing the town hall up and everything else. For what's, what it's going to cost to put in addition on any, any current building, especially one that's very nice and very heavy and very stone-based and so forth, the cost is going to be astronomical to do that. In, in the long run, okay, it might be cheaper not to do that. And I'm not saying no, we haven't made any decisions yet, but you're going to look at both sides. You're going to look at what you need at that building. We have to find out what it's going to cost. We have to find out how much land you need and everything else. So the cost is, it's going to be great no matter which way we go, yes?
I would believe that both libraries need to advocate for this and stop petitioning our patrons to come to town meeting and to fight it out on the floor. You know, going into this with a new financial year coming up, and we're doing our budgets, and we, we know we have to be level funded, there is no money, that we make this agreement that we level fund, it remains 50/50, until the day comes where the decision is made which route we follow. Because honestly, enough, enough, this fighting on the town floor, this tit-for-tat has to end. And it's time for us as adults to stop it and stop it now. And to be fair, it's to remain as we are. We're both making cuts, we're both struggling to survive. And to come into this unified and to encourage our patrons to be supportive of this so that we can keep a library, so that doesn't have to come down to one closing, one staying open. That is what I advocate this evening, is our first step in the right direction. I myself do not want to go before the finance board. It is not a nice place to go, especially with some members. I do not want to have to fight on the floor. I want to just move this in a positive direction and set the tone right from the start.
You got anything to say, Darian?
I agree with you on one aspect. I don't think fighting it out on the floor is the, the best bet. The last two years have probably damaged both libraries' reputation. So the more information we can set up before we get to the floor and the agreement, or something that we can come to and advocate for now before the people get to the annual meeting or whenever we decide to do this, is in the best interest for everybody, so...
Can I say something real quick?
Go ahead, Darian.
Hi, I'm new at the Warren Library. But it occurred to me is if there is no town money available to close the Warren Library deficit so that it can keep status quo with West Warren and Warren operating, are there any town properties that could be sold to put the money towards the Warren Library?
We would have to look at, I don't know the answers to that. We have property, I'm not sure, I'm not sure if the property would be suitable for a library. And I'm not even sure how much room a library would need if we made it, if we combined it into one.
Right, but where we're trying to also improve the town by removing dilapidated properties off the list, if those were sold and the money could be earmarked to close the libraries and support library programs, that might go a long way towards removing the budget issue off the table because I think without the budget issue, there would be cooperation between the libraries to move the programs forward.
The town actually, I'll let you go to say...
I don't think we could do that.
No, no, I'm talking about how much, we actually sold property already.
We sold $200,000 worth already, but, but that all goes on the tax classification.
Let me go over here first.
So I'm kind of confused, which doesn't take much. I've heard everything everybody has to say, which is all valid, but we're still at the same crossroads? And this is what's constant crossroads that we've been at for the last few years. And we, this is the hump we can't seem to get over. We all want the same thing, but we're going to have to put aside all different things and explore all of our options. And that's pretty much where we were at when everything fell apart. So it's just talking and exploring options. More community effort has to come into play. I mean, other people who aren't a part of, let's say, the library in itself, you know, kind of have to build a committee of some sort that you have biased opinions and that are not looking at it from just a library perspective. Because of that, I think we're going to always have our differences and not be able to move forward in certain areas. Budgets are as such, you know, we have to, we have to fundraise, and we fundraise almost about $14,000 a year. You know, so if we're not fundraising, we're not giving programs. So there's other aspects. I mean, when we talk about our budget, we had to slash all kinds of things. There was a time where we were only getting $14,000. And at that point, we were like 100% budgeting for fundraising. And we raised the money to actually do, we had our employees were volunteering. We, we don't pay health insurance. I mean, we don't give all these other things. I mean, we had to be responsible because we've had a service we wanted to put forth to the community. So we went through our stuff, and that's what we've constantly been doing. So to talk about budgets, the budgets are doable. It's all about how you manipulate your numbers and what's important and what's not important. And we are at this particular phase of $156,000. I mean, that's where we're at, and we'll probably be there for quite some time. Are we going to move forward? I don't know. But it has to be communities coming together and a committee that's kind of set up other individuals putting their input and looking at exactly what's financially sound for our community.
Thank you. What do you think, Darian? What do we do, what do you, what would you suggest at this point?
I do have a question about the $14,000 that you said that you've raised in, in funds. That's not listed on your annual report.
Wait a minute, okay. You know, we're here to discuss what we're going to do. The funding issue, if you want to talk to them after, feel free to do it. Not going to be at this meeting. That's something you can ask them, okay? We're, we're trying to figure out some way to get the, the two sides together so we can do something. The only thing I can tell you at this stage is no one side is going to win this. No one side is going to get out of this and be happy. Whatever we do at this stage, you're going to have two unhappy libraries, and we have to figure out how we're going to do it the best way, yes?
I, I agree with that. You made, you put a question earlier to both libraries. I am a former board member, I'm not a current board member, but as a resident of the town, I do believe that may, that it's probably true that one of the only ways that this situation will be resolved would be for the town to, for it to be a town-owned library. Because until that point, there are going to be, as much as you say we are not two towns, there is currently a two-town mentality. And that's, and that's reflected in, in what's happening with the library. I've heard some people say they think it's because of what's happening with the library. I don't know if that's true or not. But I do, I do think it's going to be important if that, if and when that decision is made, rather than say what we have to do is 50/50, I think it's going to be more important to do something like is perhaps was done with the, the school committees when the two towns came together. Look at the size, look at representation. If, if you decide as, as a town-owned library that you're going to go for three representatives who are residents of Warren and three residents of West Warren, then I think for one thing, that's bad news for a board. You can't have an even number. So what you might need to do then is, is see, ask for one at large to make sure you have an odd number because you will, you, there's, there's a potential of no movement ever if you have an even number on a board. So that's something for you to think about. I also think all, all the talk about a library, some potential future library is a great dream. I agree with a lot of what you said about this town being very resistant to, to moving on. But the fact remains that even if the town acquired both libraries and it became one library, the decision has to be made is where the services are going to, to be provided at that point. If we're looking at fiscal responsibility, I think to, to start with a building that is already owned free and clear is a good idea. Whether that stays there, the library forever after that, that's going to have to be seen into the future. But services have to be provided somewhere. I think the idea of the main library branch, main library being in the building that is owned free and clear, and then looking for a location so that services can be provided in West Warren for people who don't have cars, but perhaps it's in another also town-owned building, I think is a very viable solution. But I do, I do really think that it's, I don't know how you go about this. Maybe you do a non-binding vote at the next town meeting to see what the town, how does the town feel about the libraries becoming owned? I mean, I don't think we can move forward with that even because I know it has to be, it has to be by a vote of the town. So maybe that's the next step is to, to make that a non-binding referendum. You know, how many people would be, be behind the town owning the two libraries at that point? Then West Warren has to go to their constituency, Warren has to go to its cooperators and begin, but until, until we know for sure what can happen, no movement, no movement can go.
Here's what I think we have to do first. I think that we have to know if the consensus of opinion among, among both library boards would be acceptable to the fact of a town-owned library. I think that's the first step. One second. I think we have to know if that's, that would be acceptable to both boards. Once we know if that's acceptable, we can work out some other details. But we have to know first if that's going, if that would be acceptable. At some point in time, the way it's going now, okay, there may not be either library. So what we're looking at at this point is, we've got to come up with some way to fix it. We're not going to ask, we're not going to ask for an answer because we're not going to get it tonight. But I think if, if both towns, if both towns or both libraries, I won't say town, both library boards would at least consider that fact, we could then start looking into it and go from there. I think that's the only way it's going to work. I don't know if you...
No, that was exactly my question. What's the consensus? Do we want to go towards one library? Do we want it to be a town-owned library? And, and do we want to put a question out to the public, you know, at the annual?
I think we could do that. I agree, I think we could do that. Once we know, once we know if the two boards would be acceptable to that. I think that's the first question.
The, the proposal that you made here was just an idea.
Yeah.
It would have to be laid out really specifically so the boards could know exactly what they were getting into.
I think we're not asking for a... The basis is done right now.
No, I'm not, I'm, I'm just saying, your ask, you asked us to say if this is going to be acceptable. And I'm saying we would have to know what we're...
Acceptable in theory right now, what we're looking for.
Well, that's...
Because if you come back and say you're not, Warren Library is not acceptable in theory, that, that would have to go another way.
That's just a theory.
West Warren, we've already voted on that, and we're in a full consensus of having it town-run.
Okay, thank you.
We're in relative...
I understand.
Three of us are new.
Yeah.
We couldn't answer.
Not asking, not asking for an answer now.
But so just to be clear, you'd like us to discuss whether we'd like to be town-run and which would involve selling the building to the town or transferring it to a home court? Transferring ownership of the building and having a town-run library with elected trustees? Or I guess you'd have to appoint to begin with and...
Probably appoint Zenoet. And having the people that work at that library be town employees rather, okay? We're not asking for, I mean, we know you can't give us an answer right away. But we want to be able to work towards it because we keep, we're getting pressured by monies and everything else. We can consider the fact, I mean, we're going to consider everything. We're not going to say you have to do this, I have to do that. But before we start considering anything, we have to know that there would be some type of, at least, yeah, we'll, we'll consider. You have to give us the information, you have to tell us what you can think, consider doing. But if there's no consideration and the, and the answer is, ah, we don't, no matter what you do, we don't want it to become a town-owned library. No, 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 I understand that.
So I use, I'm just trying to get the sequence of things straight in my head. If everybody decided that they, if everybody got on the same page, the next step would be to go forward with that and then make other decisions so you wouldn't be looking for any type of merger before those towns?
No, I think what we're looking for...
Why, that the next step is to go to the townspeople.
That's right.
You decide, we're going to present it to the towns.
That's right, I said exactly. We'll go to town meeting and ask what their consensus is, okay? Does that mean, it could theoretically be that you'd still have the West Warren Library and the, and the Warren Library as a town, as both town libraries?
Right.
Then over the next X amount of years, this isn't going to happen quick, okay? Over the next X amount of years, we can start looking and say, well, here's what we have to do to this building. What's it going to cost? How, how big do we have to expand it? What do we have to take or what do we have to purchase in order to expand it, okay? So it's really what we're looking for, Jean, and you, you basically know what I'm talking about. What we're basically looking to say, would it be acceptable, number one, okay? Maybe we're going to have to run for, even if we take it to town meeting, town meeting says, yep, we're in favor of it, even if the library trustees and both said, okay, we'll get, we'll start getting the stuff together to change, not going to be done next day. We're going to have to live with the two libraries for a while, okay? And then decide how we can make it in one particular place, or maybe one place plus a, a annex. That's what we're looking for.
It's going to get decided by residents, town people. We just need your, your, I mean, we've received West Warren's written response to what they would like to see us do. We want something from you, and then we'll bring it to the people and let them decide. We're not just going to say this is what's going to happen. It's going to have to go before the public and, and make a determination.
We, we feel...
We need that direction because I, in my opinion, I think we're about two and a half years behind. This should have happened a while ago, and it's just the time is killing us right now. It's killing the budgets. If we don't get moving on this quick, it's really going to be a problem.
This is not a large portion of the town budget though, is it? I mean, this is a, this is a small percentage. I think it's more that it's a disruptive problem. I, I wouldn't say that the money is the big issue.
Also, I think that it would be, if it became town-owned and town-owned library, it's a lot easier to say we're going to put, try to do improvements to it and so forth, rather than do it in a building we don't own, okay? That's number one.
David, I think myself, the, the whole program here is the building. I don't think these people want to move out of the building. I don't think these people want to move into the building. If the building becomes town-owned, I think that's going to cost us a fortune to expand that.
So I...
They historically registered it. They historically registered it, which is gonna make it even more expensive. The whole building will have to be handicapped.
That's the reason I'm saying we would, we would have to look at the whole thing. It's not an easy solution.
It's gonna be a very expensive process for us to take over that building.
But when we're talking town-owned, remember one thing, we're talking town-owned library. We're not talking about any particular building at this point.
No, I'm just saying, to me, we're just listening all night. That's the biggest problem is they don't wanna leave the building, they don't wanna go in the building.
Excuse me, Jean?
If you took, if the town took over the library, wouldn't you have to take over the building if there's no...
Oh, no, we'd have to, have to take over the building too. The question becomes is what it would cost to fix it? Is it prohibitive, cost prohibitive to fix? Do we have to do something else? The building would have to be taken over. One way and shape or form, we'd have to maintain the building to a certain degree. But the question, first question we have to answer, and we can't answer anything else until we know, the board feels that the only way it's ever gonna work is be a town library under the town's financial structure with...
Agreed.
Part of the heading classification, study the remuneration schedule, taking care of it. That's the first thing. Once we get there, we can work on something else.
I just, this is a little tangential, but it's a little ash brought up. It, you have additions added to historical libraries all the time. They did it in the Ford Field, it's a doable thing. The beautiful thing with an older building is you, a lot of modern construction is, you know, it's particle board, it's, you know, and it's extremely expensive what you get. You get a building that starts falling down in about 30 years. I might, I feel that we'd be better off to stick with something, you know, that was built for last hundreds of years. So I just wanted to throw that in.
Excellent. I'd like to thank you all for, go ahead.
I just wanted to say, it's great that West Warren was able to bring their decision to you already. One of the things you need to understand, and I'm sure you do, just reminding you that West Warren as an association, the only members that are required for voting on anything is their board.
Mm-hmm.
Warren as a publicly-held corporation, the board is responsible to the corporators. So if things aren't done as quickly through the Warren Library, it's not because we're trying to hold things back, it's because we have more people that we're responsible to.
We understand that, we understand the whole thing.
Oh, you know, that's interesting because when we were in talks with West Warren, we first made our status known to each other and we said, we are a non-profit corporation. And their president told us that they were just an association. And I just happened to be in the Secretary of State's website, which I use for work. And so I said, oh, I'll just look that up. They are indeed a corporation. I guess they don't know they are, but they are. And they are also in default of paying their...
Now, wait, wait, no, don't, I wanna bring you that up.
You don't wanna bring that up? I'm just saying that you've been funding an entity that's not in compliance with their obligations to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts since 2000.
If you wanna take that up, you can, you can take that up with the, whoever you have to take it up with.
Yeah, I'll take it.
There's nothing to do with the board, okay?
Is that something that somebody should check on?
See, this is, this is just more of the same. It's just more of the same, it brings up animosity and stirs the pot.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to cease this conversation.
We're gonna let this go for now. It's going to be, Warren, get back to us. We're not setting a time limit or anything like that. Let us know what, how, whatever you have to do to get there, let us know how your people feel and we'll have another meeting once we know what that is. Because it's, I don't wanna make it more angry or anything like that, so...
We're not gonna enter into budget discussions right now or anything like that. We just wanted to get consensus of what, where we wanted to go and the feelings and, you know, we can pretty much get a good feel for how everybody's, what they're thinking and, you know, and move on from there. So that's all this was. Budgets and that can be discussed with finance and us at a later date and the finances. But we just wanted to discuss, you know, moving forward.
So, I have a kind of an option question. Is there a future plan? Is there any plans on the agenda for a municipal facility, a municipal building? I keep hearing conversations about, is there... We have no idea what we're gonna do on this type of thing until after we know where you, both sides... I'm talking about town as a whole. Like I hear we need a need for a police station, I hear when town hall is this. Town hall is being repaired right now. There's no plans right now to do a police station. Or a municipal facility. There's no municipal facilities in plans.
We're not looking at that right now, we're looking at maybe some land and adding some land we already own. But there's no, nothing in the works as far as we're gonna build right now. We're just looking at some property, looking at property that we presently own.
Will we convene at a different date?
Yes, we will get back to you. We will get back, once we hear anything from Warren, because we have to know that answer first. Once we get an answer from the Warren Library, we'll call the people back in and we'll get a little bit, put more stuff together to see what we can do. Other than that, we thank you all for coming tonight and we will get back to all of you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you all for coming in.
Thank you.